All right, it is Monday, February 7th, 6:30 PM. I'm going to call this workshop session of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First thing on the workshop is discussion of the regular agenda items and consent. Council will go ahead and just walk through these items. If you have any questions or comments, or we need to break any of it out, let me know. First up, we have consent agenda, item one, item two, item three, item four, item five, regular hearing, item six, All right, that'll be the agenda. I don't hear any questions. I don't believe we have any requests to pull any information from the consent agenda. So we will go ahead and move on to item B of the workshop session, discussion of use of city funding for mental health services and mortgage assistance. And we have our Director of Neighborhood Services, Mr. Chris McGinn, available. He's going to present the overview of this one.
I wanted to take a little bit of time tonight just to chat with City Council about some city funding that we have set aside that we've identified to be spent in the area of mental health and mortgage assistance. I just wanted to, because I think Councilwoman Cade and Councilwoman Meredith were not on City Council at that point in time when we allocated this particular funding. But this was back in January of 2021, way back when. We had multiple funding sources set aside for the pandemic response. And we, as a group, came up with some areas where there were gaps in funding, areas where the COVID funding was not necessarily assisting. Also, keep in mind that with that funding type, for the COVID funding type, that those funds hadn't be spent in areas of low to moderate income folks. So we identified three areas at that point in time, mortgage assistance, mental health services, and food insecurity. We'll be coming back to Council here shortly for a plan to utilize the food insecurity funds that we had set aside. So COVID gap funding was $250,000, and food insecurity was $75,000. Staff has done an amazing job of making sure that this funding has gone out into our community. So we had three rounds of funding, and you can see those specific areas where that funding was flagged and what those allocation amounts are. So as of November 2021, you know, those agreements for CB3 funding were approved by City Council. And so all that funding now is out the door, and it's allowing us the time to focus on the city funds and how they should be best spent. So staff has been meeting with community members, some of our nonprofits, to understand needs and discuss potential programs. Those items that were identified by Council way back when are still currently issues that we are seeing now that are still in need of funding. Ashley Ferian with Neighborhood Services and Chief Dever with the Police Department, they're going to talk a little bit about our co-care program and also some programs within United Way that focus on Mental Health Navigator and our Mortgage Assistance Program. One thing that we've noticed with our mental health partners, with our nonprofits, is that they have been struggling to hire qualified providers with that need, especially in the area of school-aged children. Another weakness, I think, that we're seeing is that data has not necessarily been collected consistently and specific to Denton County. So we're really hoping to know that as time goes on, that there's been discussion in some of the groups to attempt to collect that information, organize that information to better tell the story of what's going on in Denton County. Also, in Lewisville, youth and family counseling closed their doors in April 2021. They're not able to use some of the funding that they were allocated. So unfortunately, that increases the workload of some of our other nonprofits that are assisting the youth. So Ashley's going to talk a little bit about the Mental Health Navigator program with United Way. But I just wanted to mention a few facts concerning mental health, just to let you know, based on some of the data that we do have, that it is still currently an issue, especially in the area of school-aged children. Two and three school-aged children in Denton County have caregivers who are not necessarily familiar with mental health services. So we do have that need for folks that are in that to be educated about all areas where assistance can be found. Texas also ranks 50 out of 51 states in mental health workforce availability. So we do have a shortage here in Texas. And psychiatric presentations to local emergency departments by minor patients are up by 47%. So definitely, there's that need there. And to talk specifically about some of these programs that we were looking at, I will have Ashley speak a little bit about this program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the first proposal we are presenting tonight is a Mental Health Navigator through United Way. They are presenting a 24-month pilot program. They did originally apply for CDBG CB3 funds for this program that the committee felt would, another funding source may be the best option for this program. And so since they applied for our funding, they have been meeting with potential, other potential funding sources, including Denton County. And then they have also increased the salary for navigators to incentivize more people to apply for this position, and then also increased from two to four positions. And this would now be a county-wide program versus when they applied for our CDBG funds, which was specific to Lewisville. So this Mental Health Navigator would be reducing that barriers to care. They would be connecting clients to the most appropriate resource, and then empowering those clients to manage their mental health. And then that navigator can provide that comprehensive assessment, and then also the collaborative service planning. This program would be overseen by United Way's Director of Health and Mental Initiatives, who is a licensed practitioner herself. And then the qualifications for this position is either a master's in a social science field or a bachelor's and three to four years of experience. So this is their budget request. Again, like I said, this is county-wide. This is not specific to Lewisville. So if we were to fund this program, we would only be funding a portion of it. This is cost for the four staff positions for that 24-month period, including benefits and additional costs. I might pass it over to Chief Dever now.
Playing musical chairs with you all. Similar to United Way, MHMR also applied for CDBG CB3 funding but was not approved. Since that time, they've still been unable to find funding for this. The benefits of this partnership, it really gets MHMR involved throughout the entire portion of the client care. MHMR would be available for the initial evaluation, potentially at the scene. MHMR intake facility on Scripture Road in Denton has been closed really since the lockdown began. So everything that we've been doing with MHMR has either been by phone call or virtually. MHMR would assist directly with placement into mental facilities. They have access to that data and can find beds where we could take patients. We don't have that luxury the way it is now. We go to what we think it would be a hospital that would be available. If they don't have beds, then we have to continue to make phone calls to find that, find a suitable place. You'll see some stats here in a little bit, but MHMR will conduct most of the follow-ups that are conducted by phone. Some of the in-person stuff would still need an officer present, and that's the ones that they would accompany the officer with. And then importantly, the MHMR employee would be used for Lewisville cases only and would be directly assigned to the co-care unit. So I'll take you back just a little bit, how we got where we are. So if you remember, Chief McNeil and I presented this program to you last council retreat. You guys wanted to proceed with it as quickly as possible. So at mid-year, we received the startup funding to get the program underway. Some of that startup funding included salaries, some medical equipment, vehicle, training, and uniforms. Then in the budget process, we received full funding for the program. And once we started the program, we started doing some research with some other places that have it. And what we found was there's no set way of doing a mental health unit. The way it's done in Dallas is different than the way it's done in Fort Worth, Irving, and so on. But one thing we saw was most of these units had an off-site facility. So we began looking at that, one, because we didn't have room in the police department to house these folks. But then, two, the off-site location would benefit us because a lot of these clients don't want to go to a governmental-type building, or they may not want us going to their home and their neighbors seeing police officers and wondering what's going on. So I approached, at the time, City Manager Donna Baron about getting a lease for an office facility. So we were able to do that, and we're located on Degan. And the MHMR personnel would be assigned to this location. And you can see by the picture, it's a very small suite, but we do have room for additional MHMR personnel there. So the co-care implementation, if you remember, we had two police officers that we identified initially, along with one paramedic that was officer-certified. They received their training and got started with the program in June of '21. Last week, we added the second firefighter/paramedic who'd just got out of the academy and his FTO training. And in mid-March, we will have the final member of the team, and at that time, we'll be fully staffed. You see a note that they will be limited due to not being MHO-certified, so that's mental health officer. One of the prerequisites of being an MHO is that you have to be a police officer for two years. So it's really just a certification. The only holdback that we would have is something that we really don't do, and that's where we transport someone to services based on a court order. That's done through Denton County MHOs. We've never been asked to do it. We certainly could, but if we were, it would not, these two officers would not be able to do it until they reached their two-year mark. So when they do reach that two-year mark, we will send them to the full MHO school and get them certified. However, all the officers, these new officers, have already received crisis intervention training, and we will get them in some other classes that basically would be part of that MHO class. So they'll have all the pedigrees that they need to function as an MHO. We just can't call them an MHO at this time. So these are our calls for service. Since June of '21, you'll see 457 calls for service that were classified as mental health calls. One thing that we noticed from the get-go when we started looking at the program was we really didn't have an accurate way of tracking these calls. Some mental health calls will come in as a psychiatric call. Some will come in as disturbances. It may be a fight in progress, different things like that. So it was really just based on however the dispatcher classified that call. So what we did late September was we created a disposition code, a mental health disposition code. So now, regardless of how that call comes in, when the officer closes that call, if there's any nexus to mental health, they enter that disposition code, and that will help us track that in the future. You can see 81 clients were taken into custody by emergency protective orders, and co-care officers were assigned 192 cases for follow-up. So an MHMR clinician would take the brunt of most of those follow-ups. They're the ones that have that training in that category, and that would free up our officers to get back out on the street and respond to more calls for service. This graph shows the hour in which most of our mental health calls come in. You can see the red bars, that's our current co-care hours. We have adjusted those a couple of times throughout this process, and we just adjusted them to 8:00 to 8:00, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, because we wanted to capture most of the calls whenever they came in. Certainly doesn't mean that they're going to be able to respond to all of those, but we're hoping that with them being more available, with MHMR doing the follow-ups, that they should be more available. But we'll continue to evaluate these hours as we get more data in, and we'll adjust those hours as needed. So our current process right now, so if a client is a danger to themselves or others, co-care officers or really any police officer can do this. They take that person into emergency custody, and we take them directly to a mental health facility. As I mentioned earlier, we sometimes don't know if that facility has beds available. So we have to, there's a lot of work that goes into finding a facility at times. If the client needs some sort of treatment, but they're not a danger to themselves or others, if they have insurance, we can find a hospital that's willing to take them, most of the time. If they don't have insurance, that's where MHMR really comes into play, because they have a contract with the state of Texas to provide that service. And as I mentioned, they're currently only doing that virtually. Post-crisis, I talked about the follow-ups. Those are done in person and by phone. So this is what an example of what a work week would look like. You see the first row, that's the LPD officers. Right now, they work 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. They work 12-hour shifts, and we have them available seven days a week. They work rotating weekends off. Now, if one of them is out, we do not backfill that with someone from patrol. That position would just be vacant for that day. The next row is the fire department, the paramedics that are also on the co-care team. They're assigned to 24-hour shifts to each of the shifts that the fire department have, A-shift, B-shift, and C-shift. They work whenever their respective shifts are on duty. They generally will work co-care hours during the hours that co-care is working, but they also have other duties such as arson investigation, fire investigation, and things like that. So they could be pulled away, but we try to concentrate on co-care during those hours, and then after-hours is when they would do the other. The last one is the MHMR staff member. We don't know for sure what hours they're going to work if we do get the funding. I'll communicate that with MHMR, and we'll figure that out. You know, everybody's struggling hiring right now and finding a clinician that wants to work after-hours, potentially on the weekend, may be hard to do. But we'll cross that bridge if we get the funding. Thank you.
Back to me. So what MHMR has proposed is hiring a licensed practitioner of the healing arts or an LPHA. And the duties would include, as Chief has talked about, is overseeing the coordination of clinical services for the individual in Lewisville and following up with that individual, on top of acting as a liaison between MHMR and Lewisville Police Department, providing that phone and face-to-face consulting, to have that shared goal of engaging individuals and providing resources to our community. This would be the first of its kind here in Denton County. And then also, as Chief said, it would be housed in their co-care office. We did ask MHMR about hiring this position, and they have said that they have people internally that want to work with the police department. So they think that they have internal candidates that would be interested in this position. This is their budget request. The difference between this one and the Mental Health Navigator is this is for a one-time, 12-month funding cycle versus the 24-month that United Way had on their first proposal. So this one is for one position also, and the total is $94,000, including a lease of a car and hotspot laptop, et cetera.
And just to point out to Council that, you know, this is a good opportunity for us to dip our toes in the water and see if this works. And if it does, I would expect that Chief Dever would have an action step with his budget to extend this in future years.
Both of these programs are going to be able to help us build that data and find that information on the needs in our community. So moving on to mortgage assistance. So we did allocate some of the CDBG CB3 funds to mortgage assistance, but because it's federal funds, there are a lot of restrictions with those funding, including it has to go to low-to-moderate-income residents. But we know that Lewisville residents in all income brackets have been affected by COVID, and have had some sort of crisis in the last year, whether it's medical bills, job loss, et cetera. We know for sure that Castle Hills residents have applied for assistance. So we know people from all income brackets are feeling the effects of the pandemic that's going on. So we reached out to United Way Homelessness Initiative Director to talk about creating a mortgage assistance program for those residents beyond the low-to-moderate-income brackets here in Lewisville. A little data about mortgage in Denton County in general. You know, our median family income in Lewisville is just over $64,000. And then the county estimated median mortgage payment is $2,000. With our population of 106,000, based on county-wide data, that means about 25,000-plus Lewisville homes, homeowners fall into that income gap of above 80% income. This is a chart for the income that, we use this chart for our federal programming. If they are 80% and below, they qualify for our CDBG programs. So these funds would be used for that 80% to 120%. So if a family of two, if they make gross income of $57,000 or less, they would qualify for our CDBG program. But if they make more than that, they would fall into this program.
I also wanted to add that although some of the previous slides were talking about population at 106, this, if adopted, would apply to Castle Hills as well. So I think those numbers were outdated. We needed to update those. But this would be available to anyone that's a Lewisville resident.
So United Way is proposing is a resource navigator. So people that may be coming to this program for mortgage assistance may have never requested assistance of any kind. So they may not know what is even available out there for them. So these funds, this navigator, they would come to this navigator as needing mortgage assistance, and this person would then do a basic needs assessment to see what other resources they may need that they don't even realize are available, whether it's clothes for their kids, lunch for their kids, things like that. So this program is going to be based on the federal rental assistance programs that we've been having here in the county. So this would help one client for a payment with that median income of, median mortgage payment of $2,000 for three months could be $6,000 assisting them. The eligibility, they will have to have a tie to a crisis during the pandemic, like I said, job loss, medical bills. And then United Way does plan to serve 15 to 20 households with these funds. One payment is a future with all, up to those five months would be arrears. That's the biggest need right now, is you had a medical bill that piled up, those bills piled up, and you weren't able to pay your mortgage. So the focus is past mortgage payments with at least one in the future. And then so their timeline is application process plus 60 days would help with that financial assistance, and then that resource navigation of finding other assistance that they may need. They plan to hire one part-time resource navigator to assist these households, which includes completing the intake, that brief needs assessment, and then connecting them to those partners for those resources beyond mortgage assistance they may need, and then the 10% admin cost, which is pretty standard for programs like this. This is their budget request, $40,000 for the staff person, $121,000 specifically to mortgage assistance, and then that 10% overall for $16,000 with a total request of $177,000.
With that, Council, our recommendation, after looking at the two programs with related to mental health, is to recommend the co-care partnership with MHMR. You will see that the dollar amount there is slightly more than they requested, and that was to be able to compensate for any type of overtime that might be necessary. Obviously, when there's a crisis, people may have to work a few more extra hours in a given week, and so that would cover that additional cost. The second is that mortgage assistance program is, we're recommending the remainder of it be dedicated to that, $145,000. The intent of that program, obviously, is we have homeowners in Lewisville, and we want to keep those homeowners in Lewisville. And so this is a gap that has not had any resources put towards it, and our staff believes that this is a strong program that could work. With that, if there are any comments from Council, we'd love to hear.
Council, any questions, comments? I had a couple of just brief points I wanted to make. First of all, I appreciate staff doing the due diligence. You saw the number vastly underfunded, and Denton County specifically is on the low end of funding for our population as well. So it's kind of a double whammy. And of course, we've had myself on the Mental Health Board with United Way, and as much as I appreciate and would love to see a navigator to kind of figure out the structure for Denton County, this is immediate assistance where we don't have any. And it's helping our police officers, and it's helping those folks that are just, they are right there in the middle of a crisis. So as much as I'd love to be able to fund both, I think that this is probably the more impactful for our residents as it stands right now. And then as far as the mortgage assistance, I believe that this really follows with our housing policy over the last several years, where our goal has always been to, or at least from the Council's perspective, has always been to keep people housed. If we can keep a roof over people's heads, then the overall impacts are much less than once they are out of a home and having to struggle to get back in. So I really appreciate the look and the find at that gap. You know, I wasn't really aware that there was one. I mean, there seems to always be one in these types of programs. So I appreciate both of those. So you need us to give you some direction, or?
If Council has any concern with the recommendation, I just would like it to be voiced, but other than that, we'll move forward accordingly.
I, ooh, this one's really loud. I don't have any objection to the proposal. I would just, my only thought is that I would like to see us heavily market this United Way program, because I think what Ms. Baron just said was that there's probably people that really need this, and they have absolutely no idea that they could actually qualify for this. So I would love to see the city really push a lot of advertisement and make sure that we get that message out to the citizens.
Thank you.
And if I could add, I would just like to make sure that we get a report back from Denton, so we can see the outreach and how it helped. Doesn't have to be specific to the people, but just so we know what those funds did for folks in Lewisville.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, with that being said, we've got about two minutes, unless there's anything else. Mr. McGinn? Just shutting down the laptop? Awesome. All right. We will take a small break and move into regular session here in about 60 seconds. We will take a small break and move into regular session here in about 60 seconds. All right. It is seven o'clock. I would like to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council regular session to order. We do have a quorum. And first up to run the invocation, Councilmember Troyer.
Please stand and join me in a moment of silence, contemplation, introspection. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Meredith, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the US and Texas pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Next up, we have a presentation from the Salvation Army to present the Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge results. Hello, hello.
This opportunity to be with you. Good evening. I am Mary Freeman, the Community Relations Director for the Salvation Army's Collin and Denton Counties areas. And I send regards and deep appreciation for Captains Ben and Charles C. Godwin, who serve as the leaders of our services here in Lewisville. I especially want to thank you, Mayor TJ Gilmore, and all of you senior leaders for championing and leading the recruitment efforts for the 2021 Lewisville Area Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge. Your leadership inspired four area mayors to participate for the first time in the Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge, and we now have working relationships with Bartonville Mayor Bill Shearer, Capel Mayor Wes Mays, Flowermount Mayor Derek France, and Highland Village Mayor Charlotte Wilcox. We are pleased to be here with you tonight to present a certificate of appreciation to your team for helping the challenge raise much-needed funds for the Salvation Army of Lewisville's year-round programs, addressing family instability caused by poverty, homelessness, and addiction. Special thanks to you, Mayor Gilmore, for celebrating the Salvation Army on your birthday on Saturday, December 11th. We are happy to report your very successful efforts meant that your team ranked first in number of bell ringers on Saturday, December 11th, 14 stellar volunteers. Your team ranked first in dollars raised during in-person bell ringing for a total of $1,398.22. Your team ranked first in virtual red kettle donations of $1,615.78. And your team ranked first in dollars raised at your kettle kickoff right here in city council chambers on November 15th, raising $236.22. All efforts combined, and the Lewisville team ranked first in total dollars raised, $3,250.22, a very successful campaign. But most importantly, we owe you a debt of gratitude because your efforts inspired the mayoral teams to recruit 39 volunteers to provide 27 hours of bell ringing to raise a total of $6,224.78. We very much appreciate your leading the charge to help provide hope and help to neighbors in need. Your incredible efforts helped the Salvation Army in Lewisville support neighbors like Vanessa. You see, unfortunately, Vanessa had lost her job and healthcare insurance when the agency she worked for lost funding. This created a huge crisis for Vanessa because her teenage daughter, Tia, experienced serious medical issues that required hospitalization. Vanessa drained her 401K to pay medical bills. And thankfully, her daughter's health did improve, but Vanessa ended up worse than broke. She was on the verge of becoming homeless, and she quotes, "I had never asked for help from anyone, never been on a government system or programs of any type." But the Salvation Army helped pay Vanessa's rent and utilities for six months, gave her job referrals, and provided training in financial literacy, budgeting, and nutrition. She also received regular groceries from the food pantry, and this support helped Vanessa and Tia remain in their home. Vanessa could get a job and get back on her feet. She has shared with us that "I was recently hired full-time," she said with a smile. That's a plus, and I owe it all to the help I received from the Salvation Army. We continue to see increasing demands for our services and anticipate that your support will help to provide more than 124,000 meals through our food pantry program alone, and the ability to provide a safe place for neighbors to lay their heads, just like we experienced this past week during these frigid temperatures. But more importantly, your support will help us provide hope for neighbors like Vanessa. We look forward to Lewisville's participation in an even more successful Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge in 2022. And we welcome you and anyone here tonight to tour the Salvation Army of Lewisville and witness this generosity in action. We truly appreciate your partner and support, and may God richly best bless you. And I have a certificate, and would love a picture if we could get it.
First. Got it. There we go. Well, of course, we could not do this without the generosity of Lewisville residents and those who gave their time and their treasure. So thank you so much for everyone turning out. It was, it was a good time. It's always a great time to be able to go ring the bells and, you know, put a little bit of holiday spirit to everybody. But remember, the Salvation Army works year-round. So if you need to find something to give back, they're a great organization to do that and make sure to, especially now, it's cold and we're not done with winter yet. So there's, there's still need out there. And as long as there's need, we need to be helping out. So thank you for that. Next up, we have the Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have one request to appear before the city council by Suchi Naidoo. Suchi, are you? And if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hi, my name is Suchi Naidoo. I live at 2549 Jacobson Drive, Lewisville, Texas 75067. I'm a sophomore in Lewisville High School-Harman, a resident of Lewisville for the last eight years, a member of the city's Youth Action Council, student council secretary, and a participant in competitive youth robotics, and have conducted robotics outreaches in Lewisville at events such as Color Palooza, Western Days, and Holiday Stroll. I'm here to present to the council to consider an opportunity to increase community vitality, tourism revenue, and position Lewisville as a center of youth robotics competitions in the DFW area. Currently, robotics competitions are emerging as an avenue for STEM education and hands-on training for future engineers and technologists. For teams and schools, a dedicated area to build and practice with the robot has been delegated to the school system, and depending on the school funding, demographics, and the interest of a teacher, some communities are better served than others. This leaves a number of students, like me and many more, that are not fortunate to have the above combinations of factors to form community teams that consist of kids from many different schools. I petition to the council to consider developing a public robotics competition area that anyone or any team could use, and not just those of a specific school district, but a space for Lewisville community. This would be similar to skate parks or soccer fields where high school students can have scrimmages and practices to prepare for their competitions or have friendly robotics matches. I can imagine a place where students can go to sharpen their robotics skills. Currently, I have engaged with Mr. Bill Chung of I Compete, the active entertainment complex and bar, opening up in the Music City Mall later this month. Mr. Chung has graciously agreed to allow us to approximately use 150 square feet of area in his business area for middle school robotics, and we are greatly appreciative of this gesture. The high school level of robotics needs 10 times the space, 1,500 square feet, which is roughly one-third of the floor space of a basketball court excluding the side space and viewing. I want to share his perspective. The ancient Romans invested in sports to improve the vitality of their communities by creating competition areas and discovering the Olympics. This in turn gave them strong warriors through a competitive avenue. In the industrial age, a number of team sports were fostered for better teamwork that could be applied in places like the military. With the new age of technology, this would also provide an opportunity to bring businesses, students, and the community together to help address the current and future need of our society. Every aspect of the community, organizations, and businesses is dependent on technology to function. If we set up local students to be educated and have the skill sets to match the growing needs around STEM, it'll benefit everyone, and the community will have a strong workforce for the future. Currently, no robotics or STEM-dedicated space is in the DFW area, but a dedicated space and commitment to grow hands-on training around STEM in Lewisville could put Lewisville on the map and draw investment interest in the city. As humanity continues into this technological age, it's imperative for communities to start embracing STEM sports to enhance remote collaboration and execution, rapid production development, technology. And it all starts with us, the youth. When I played ice hockey, I had to go to the skating grand gate farmer's branch. When I play chess, I have to go to Dallas or Richardson. I hope when someone thinks of the go-to place for robotics competitions and scrimmages, Lewisville will be the first in their minds. Mayor and council, thank you for your time and for listening to me this evening. I would be happy to answer any questions to council or city staff if they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Suchi. And if you haven't seen the robotics work, I think you probably will at other city events this coming year. They do some pretty amazing stuff. City Secretary, do we have any other comments for?
No, certainly not.
All right. We're going to move to item E, Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. If a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any requests? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Consent agenda is approved. Item F, Regular Hearing, number six. Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Lewisville City Code, Section 15-126, Stopping, Standing, and Parking Prohibited on Specific Streets. To prohibit parking on both sides of Jelani Lane from Bel Air Boulevard to Wellington Drive. Jelani Lane is one of two ways in and out of the Chase Oaks subdivision generally located north of Bel Air Boulevard, east of Valley Parkway. When parents of Founder's Academy students park on this short stretch of roadway to drop off or pick up their children, the parking and the pickup drop operation impedes the traffic flow for the residents. Upon staff receiving complaints from residents, the issue was investigated, and staff recommends no parking on both sides of Jelani Lane between Bel Air Boulevard and Wellington Drive. The Transportation Board considered this item in its January 4, 2022, meeting and voted unanimously four to nothing to approve the recommendation to the city council. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. David Salmon, our city engineer, is available for questions. Oh, no, it's, wow. Hi, David. Council, do we have any questions?
I just have a comment. I'd like to tell staff thank you for their quick response and, and the action that was taken on this because it has become a big problem.
Press ready.
I think that it's, it's a great, that they took the whole.
Yeah, it's a pretty easy setup to change. It's not impacting any particular homes.
Right.
There's no home frontage right there. So it's, it's a, it's a good win. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 15, Section 15-126, by prohibiting parking on Jelani Lane, providing for repealer-severability, penalty, and effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item seven, Consideration of a Variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-95, Easements Regarding Easement Setback Requirements for the Parker Place Residential Neighborhood Located at the Northeast Corner of FM 544 in Windhaven Boulevard, as requested by Greg Hessel, P.E., with Spears Engineering on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a 24.120-acre, single-family residential neighborhood, Zoned PD-ETH The owner is requesting a variance to reduce the required building setback from 10 feet to 5 feet along a waterline easement. It's recommended that the city council approve the variance as requested, set forth in the caption above. We do have city staff available for questions, if there are any.
Mayor, I have a question. And I guess this would go to you. So the, I noticed that the easement goes from 20 feet to 15 feet for just this little segment. Is that, does that have to do with the depth, with the size of the line? What, why, why does the easement change width?
The easement will change with, based on depth, so.
Okay. So we're not concerned within the easement itself, we, we can get adequate access to the line to do repairs or replacement without having to encroach outside of the easement?
Right, right.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we're comfortable with the, with the request.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Council, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the variance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. All right. We will go ahead and move right into reports. Do we have any particular council member that wants to go first? We're going to do it around, round robin tonight.
I'll go first.
All right. Councilmember Meredith?
Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. In the spirit of Valentine's Day next week, Valentine Factory for Families with Children of All Ages, Tuesday, February 8th, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. No registration required, Bennett Program Room. Families can use the library's craft supplies to make simple Valentines for friends or family. This is a come-and-go event. Elementary Explorations for Children's Age 6 to 8, Thursday, February 10th, 4:30 to 5:30. Ticket required, Bennett Program Room. I'm really going to read this one. Valentine, Anti-Valentine's Craft Make and Take for ages 10 and up. Come-and-go event Friday and Saturday, February 11th and 12th, noon to 4:30. No registration required. The Hive Makerspace, and whoever wrote this description did a really good job. Lost that loving feeling? Can't breathe with all the noxious love in the air? For this come-and-go event, stop by the Hive to divert Valentine's angst through mixed-media crafting. First come, first served while supplies last. This activity is rated for makers age 10 and over for explicit jadedness, morbid elements, and use of hot glue guns.
All righty then.
That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. By the way, I've been seeing that on social media, and I keep debating whether or not to repost it because it's just so gloriously well-written.
Great paragraph.
Right. Councilmember Troyer?
Not sure if I can follow that. First of all, I want to, want to encourage everyone, if you haven't already downloaded the R Lewisville, Texas app for your smartphone. Texas app for your smartphone, it's a very, very, very informative and useful feature. I've used it several times to report issues, always anonymously, so I don't get any special treatment. But this past weekend, I realized that we were missing a street name sign on top of our, at the end of the street. I submitted the request on Saturday, got several responses, and by today noon, it had been corrected. So I would encourage any citizens who have not already downloaded that app to do it because it is an excellent way of reporting issues or keeping up with what's going on in the city. And I do have several things from Lewisville Grand Theater, so I'll go to those. First of all, performances. Surprise Hayden's Symphony Number 94, featuring Victoria Hand, grand prize winner of the Brunel Greg, I'm having trouble reading. Young Artist Competition presented by the Lewisville Lake Symphony. This will be on February 11. Texas Tunes Hot Club of Cowtown, presented by City of Lewisville, February 12. And as always, the Acoustic Jam Friday Nights, presented by Visual Art League of Lewisville. Once again, it's always an enjoyable experience. And activities going on in the theater. Art Talk with Catherine Baranet, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, February 8. Michael Holter Watercolor Workshop, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, February 15 through the 17. And there are a couple art exhibitions going on. The LISD High School Exhibition, presented by the LISD, February 11 through the 26th. And A World Divided, Tomorrow United, the MLK Student Art Show, presented by the Committee to Commemorate MLK Junior Day, running now through February 19. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I want to hit Thomas back at the back. Our emergency department was ready to go throughout the county, throughout the city, and we really seemed to be incredibly well-prepared. So I appreciate everything that the city staff does behind the scenes to make sure residents are protected, and make sure that our first responders know where they need to be and have the resources they need and all the tools available. So I know you guys worked hard over this past weekend. I appreciate it.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
No report.
Nothing.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you, sir. Oh, I know we got one here.
Mayor, what's the lake level report for Lewisville Lake?
Elevation is currently at 520.06 feet, about two feet, or just shy of two feet above or below normal elevation.
Thanks, sir.
No report.
Nothing, sir.
All quiet. No, sir. Councilmember Green?
Well, I just wanted to say how thrilled I am to hear that we won the Mayor's Challenge. Of course, the biggest win was that we were able to help raise much-needed funds for the community, but we had a lot of fun, and I took my son out there this year, and he got to hang out with Chief, and he is so mesmerized by the fire department, and, you know, he got to be out there with the chief ringing the bell, and taught him a really good lesson, too. So I just wanted to say how excited I am that we won because, you know, I'm a little bit competitive, so we won, but it was for good cause. So I also just, I just wanted to briefly mention that we are gearing up for the St. Patty's Day Texas-style festival here in Wayne Ferguson Plaza that will be on March 12 from 1 to 8 p.m. And we are looking for volunteers, if I'm not mistaken, and you can sign up to be a volunteer for that event on the Special Events and Festivals page on the city's website.
Two stages of music. Two.
Hmm?
We got two stages of music.
Two stages of music.
Lots of music acts this year. Councilmember Jones?
I just want to thank the staff. As a resident, you guys, as usual, performed outstanding during the freeze that we had this week. You know, public works, public safety, emergency management, and our city staff that was running in, they kept abreast of everything that was going on. And so I just want to celebrate you guys and thank you for your hard work. And the power stayed on this time, yay. We have an adoption special going on at the Jean-Carey Animal Shelter through February 19. Oh, I stole your.
You stole my report, Brandon.
Some days you just get away.
You are shameful.
Some days you get away.
Shameful.
It's going on through February 19. The adoption specials are $20. There's normally $90. The Jean-Carey Animal Shelter is at 995 East Valley Ridge.
And is that for dogs or cats? It's for dogs.
For, I don't know.
It's for dogs. So I'm going to just.
For your Valentine.
Put a little thing on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Due to the freeze and everything, and to be quite honest, we were full before the freeze hit. So we have a lot of, a lot of great animals that need that forever home. They're fully vetted by our animal shelter, and they do such a good job there. But it's full, and we need some people. Just open your hearts and open your heart, and go adopt.
Thank you. City manager?
I just want to tell my husband happy 41 because I'm spinning it here instead of with him.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank staff. Obviously, I've been in the role for 30 days, and we could not have done this without all of the experts that are out here running the show alongside me. I did want to do a special shout-out to a gentleman who's in the audience right now who was just moved up to the majors, and he did an exceptional job. Keith is out of town on military leave, and Kelly just got thrown into the frying pan, and he did an exceptional job. So thank you so much, Kelly.
We'll work on that lake level report. There's a little nuances that we got to. No, it's great to have a phenomenal team. I do want to make a quick request of residents. We have, and this one's important, folks. Lewisville's a city of planning, and these aren't plans that sit on a shelf. These are actively worked plans, but they require resident input. If we don't have good resident input, it's hard to build the city in the direction that residents want to go. So this Wednesday, February 9, we are asking for your input. Lewisville Parks and Recreation Department needs help with the creation of our healthy infrastructure plan. There's a public meeting scheduled on Wednesday at 5 p.m. It's in the Dogwood Community Room at Thrive, and that's at 1950 South Valley Parkway. You can use GoZone to get there, or you can drive there yourself. But this new master plan will help guide the future of our parks, recreation centers, trails, well, recreation, not centers, but just recreation in general, trails, open spaces, and tree canopy. We're starting to add in more healthy lifestyle types of options into this program. If you've ever read about Blue Zones, that's some of the inspiration of this concept. And if you want to talk about Blue Zones, let me know. I'd be happy to grab a cup of coffee with you. So let's, if you can, turn out. That will be at 6 p.m. There will be refreshments. Masks are not required, but anyone who feels more comfortable with a mask or has not been fully vaccinated is strongly encouraged to wear one when physically, physical distancing can't be maintained. But great opportunity for you to give input on where you want to see the city go, and I expect to see great turnout. With that, we are going to move into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, Legal Issue Regarding the Economic Development Agreement between the City of Lewisville and Turbo Chef Technologies Incorporated, dated February 3, 2020. Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, Discussion of Potential Claim Against Certain Video Service Providers for Non-Payment of Franchise Fees Pursuant to Texas Utilities Code, Chapter 66, and Retention of Outside Counsel. Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We are in closed session. All right, we're going to reconvene back into regular session. Council, is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.